Heard all kinds of different things. I know that on your agenda tonight, you're talking, it's about some portion of Kwan. I know the city council has talked a lot about it and we just want to understand, I guess, and make sure that you're committed to straightening out the parking problem as associated with the line relocation. And then also, we're trying to understand exactly why the school district needs us to revise the two intersections and widen them and put in lights. All total, it's about, it's a little under a million dollars. And so, again, we're just trying to understand all of that and would like input of that. So, thanks.
Thanks, Sherry. Yeah, we, you're correct. On the agenda this evening is an agreement between the city, the district, and Ameren UE regarding the relocation of the electrical power poles that are out front of the Tillman School. As part of that discussion, as we'll get into greater detail tonight, there's going to be some curbing and parking reconfiguration. So I think we'll address at least some of your concerns at that time. Thanks. Next up is the approval of the agenda for tonight's meeting. This is an action item.
Move approval?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving tonight's agenda, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Next up is 3.03, awards and honors report. Ms. Ginger Casey.
I'd just like to keep my report brief tonight and thank everybody for coming and for our 150th celebration, the charter, the charter in February 17th, 1865, especially thank artist Mary Hansen for the lovely desk and for everybody showing up. And we're very excited to see some of the other activities and to read the books. So there'll be more coming and we, we hope we'll have many more celebrations. This is a two-year celebration because we did not have our first day of school until I think September 24th or 26th, 1866. So we have a lot of time to celebrate more exciting things. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Casey. Next up is the consent agenda, and we will break this down into a couple of components. First up is 4.01, approval of the minutes for the February 2nd regular board meeting. This is an action item.
Move approval?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions?
Stay.
Thank you. Next up is approval of 4.02, approval of vouchers payable, 4.03, approval of personnel items, and 4.04, approval of construction change orders. These are all action items.
Move approval?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Dr. Williams, would you like to address 4.03, the personnel items?
Uh, just, we want to announce that we have recently offered a contract to, and the board is in the process of approving that contract, for a, for the position of executive director for student services. And that contract will go to Shonda, Shonda Amberz Phillips, who is currently director of counseling services in the Rockwood School District. She will be at our meeting on March, I think it's 9th, and we will be able to introduce her to the board. So we're excited about filling that administrative position.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. I have a motion and a second to approve 4.02, 03, and 04. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Next up is unfinished business. First is the report from Tillman Elementary School regarding their improvement. Dr. Lisa Greenstein.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to share our school improvement plan with you. And there you see our Tillman Trailblazers and our Tillman staff. And we also have some of our wonderful parents here with us this evening. So we thank you for joining us. And we're going to start by sharing, or I am, and Maria apologizes for not being here tonight. It's Festival of Bands, as you know, so that's where she is tonight. So we're going to start with sharing our mission statement at the bottom of this slide, because everything that we do at Tillman is really around this mission statement, which we adopted as a staff with input from our students and parents, that we are empowered to be active learners, creative problem solvers, and compassionate leaders who demonstrate character and contribute to a global society. So as we start with our goals, we're going to share what we are working on this year, and then we will share our current reality, which shows some of the data that we base these goals on. And then also, we'll go into our action steps for addressing these goals. So you see our mission statement is in this goal, and this is our achievement goal, where we want all of our students to be active learners and creative problem solvers and showing growth. And we have two objectives here, really focusing on our super group, which would include our African-American students, our students receiving free and reduced lunch, and also our students who have IEPs. And we want to really show growth in being proficiency and also reducing the achievement gap. And then also, objective B is really looking at our tier-three interventions and making sure that all of our students in this area are showing growth and that we will be able to decrease intervention needs for our top-tiered students. Our goal too is really looking at equitable structures, inclusivity, and accessibility, and making sure that all members of the Tillman community, which would include our students, parents, and staff, and community members as well, feel connected, safe, and respected. And we have several objectives here, and these goals were created by our whole staff. We have come together many times to give input and to really talk about what we want our objectives to be. So we are looking at African-American students, we'll have a decrease in discipline referrals. Also, we have started the Olveus Anti-Bullying Program this year, so really targeting that data and making sure that students have neither been engaged in bullying or are the targets of bullying. We've also looked closely, we've had many new students that have come to Tillman. Last year, we had 58 new students, and many of those were non-Kirkwood resident students, so making sure that the students and their families will increase participation in our school events. Also, looking at parent-teacher conferences and making sure that we have 100% participation. And then, our last objective here is that all of our staff will contribute to building a positive school culture. We also decided this year to have a technology goal, and our hope is, in the future, that technology will be embedded into everything we do. But as we are still learning and growing in this area, our goal is that technology will be integrated into instruction to enhance student achievement and engagement. So when we look at our data, we know that this is definitely something that we've looked a lot at this year, and we own it, and we know it is not acceptable for our students. And we have a plan that I'm going to talk about based on the goals that were shared. So when we look at, here is our ELA information, and here is math, and here we have our science And again, we've taken a lot of time this year to really look at this data and to come up with some action steps that are very detailed that I'll be sharing with you in a moment. We also had new data this year, because as I said, we've started the Olveus Program. So these are some of the results from the survey that was given to our third, fourth, and fifth graders. And when we look at national comparisons, the top, the slide on the left was interesting, that our third graders were reporting way below the national average, our fourth graders were reporting above the national average, and our fifth graders were reporting right around the national average of having been bullied two to three times a month or more. And then, the bottom slide on the right shows when students are reporting to adults. So we were pleased to see that we were above the state average in all of our grade levels. Yet, our goal is that we have 100% of our students reporting any bullying, and that we have 0% of our students reporting that they have been bullied. So we are working on that as a staff of how to address that information. So our staff came together after looking at our goals and looking closely at our data and decided to have some focus groups. So that's what I'm going to be sharing next. So every student, I'm sorry, every staff member is involved in one of these focus groups, and we meet at least once a month to work on all of these action items, as well as different action items that come up throughout the weeks and the months. So our first one is 21st century technology skills. And we have some very passionate staff members at Tillman who work very closely with Nick Strucker and through our TLG group to really think about what this can look like at Tillman. And we've started really looking at expectations, making sure they're consistent throughout the building, looking at vertical plans of what's happening in kindergarten all the way through fifth grade, having meetings about iPads for our parents, lots of professional development for our staff, and also really working on digital citizenship throughout the building. Then we have a focus group looking very closely at strategies for closing the achievement gap. And we've really been looking at instruction, what that can look like, using the curriculum that we have, and then also the environment. So learning walks, we have teachers who are learning from each other within the building and also across the district. Our instructional coach is working with many groups on lesson study, really unpacking our curriculum and making sure we're differentiating for all of our students, really focusing on high expectations and what does that mean to have high expectations for all students, and then making sure that we are putting supports in place to address that and support that. Accessing and analyzing the data, and as we shared some of that data with you today, our staff is looking at that and coming up with action steps. And then also, goal setting. We've been doing a lot of goal setting with our students, kindergarten through fifth grade, and helping them to set goals and then to track their We also, as I shared, we have an instructional coach, and she is doing a fantastic job of meeting with teachers individually, in grade levels, as a building, to really address the pieces of our school improvement plan and to support teacher needs and student needs. We've really been looking at our intervention structures to make sure that our students are really benefiting from the intervention that they have, and then being able to transfer that knowledge into the classroom. This year and last year, we've been working with NCCJ, the National Conference for Community and Justice, and this was something that was requested by our staff, that we have someone come in and work with our staff, and really being able to have conversations with each other, to learn about what we as adults need to know and how we can support each other and our students in having courageous conversations. And then, we've also had a lot of trainings that we have been doing within the district, but also out of the district. We have an optional book study going on right now. We have staff members that have been to educational equity conferences. I know some of, myself included, are going this week to a training on that. And those are the strategies right now that we have for closing the achievement gap. Our next two areas really are connected to this. One is student connections. And when we think about, do all of our students feel connected and feel that they belong at Tillman? And so, we have come up with lots of ways to help our students to form relationships with teachers, with other students, through our Trailblazer families, which is a multi-age group that meets once a month. We have clubs, because we knew that many of our students could not access clubs before or after school, and so now they have an opportunity to do that during the day. As I said, we are working with our Olveus Program. A lot of these, we've already gone over. Yet, last year, one of our teachers started a step team for our fifth-grade students, and this year, we have one as well with over 40 kids that come to learn how to do that and share with others. We've talked about character counsel before. This year, our guidance counselor has really focused on guidance lessons and coming into the classrooms at least once a month, if not more, to be proactive and teaching preventative strategies. And then, really looking at our school events through the lens of equity. Are all of our students able to access our events? And as you'll see in a moment, we'll talk about our families as well. And making sure that we have assemblies that our students are leading and participating in. And, let's see, we talked about those already. So family connections, we want 100% of conference participation, and we've been working really hard to make that happen. Having lots of informational meetings. We have amazing parents that ask us for information, and so we recently had a math night. That was an idea that came from a parent and had over 50 parents attend. And now, we've been asked to do a literacy night, and so we're planning that as well. Another parent had asked us to do frequently wondered questions, and so we are trying to get that information out to parents as often as we can, so that parents feel comfortable having the information that they need to be a part of Tillman and the Kirkwood School District. And then, really looking at that social-emotional support. Having a full-time social worker has been wonderful at our school, our educational support counselor, and also our counselor. And then, the junior Trailblazer story time, inviting our three, four, and five-year-olds in, which is always, you see that in the top picture, a big hit at Tillman. And having student-led announcements where we are sharing information about things that are coming up, so that our students are aware of those events. And then, I wanted to end today just sharing some celebrations, because we know we have a lot of work to do at Tillman, and we are working together as a team to make that happen. And we also have lots of celebrations as we go along the way. So we started out this summer having a staff retreat, where all of our staff members came together for community building and to also talk about our vision and our goals. And we talked about our theme at that retreat, which is celebrate different, because we all know that we gravitate towards things that are the same and people that are the same. And so, really celebrating different and getting to know each other, and really knowing the story of every child, of every adult in our building. We also continue to have many new students and families that come to Tillman, and so we make sure that we are really helping them transition into Tillman. And we're very excited. Our Fine Arts Festival is coming up, and we are going to be displaying some work that our students are doing for Black History Month. And they will each be working on an author, and that is going to be displayed. And actually, we had a really exciting day today. We had a read-in, and Mr. Darnell Frost, was he here today? Oh, he's right there, came to be one of our readers. And it was really a wonderful morning. He even came on to announcements, which we appreciated. We had African-American leaders and staff members in our district come and read to every one of our classrooms, and it was just a really nice morning, and we appreciate you being there. And then also, we did, which we've done every year since I've been at Tillman, an Autism Speaks Walk, and we had a great team of members that walked this year. And then, also, really being committed to hiring diverse staff. We really want our staff to reflect our student body, and so we continue to look at how we can make that happen. And every year, we've had a Veterans Day assembly, and again, we had more than 60 veterans who came this year and joined us. And our sustainability efforts continue to grow and grow. This is a greenhouse. We have amazing parents who have really helped us with these efforts. They just planted the prairie last week, and we have many model gardens and composting on the inside. And then, we just so appreciate the involvement of our PTO, of really looking and examining at the current structures that we have and how we can make those accessible and equitable for all of our families. So we really just appreciate all of their support and hard work. So I thank you for listening, and does anyone have any questions?
Well, I'll start off.
Okay.
You mentioned at a couple of points that your objective is 100% parent participation. I note that this was a question that was posed at the Professional Development Day last Friday, on the difficulty of involving even 75, 80% of the parents. What strategies are you employing to, to meet your objective, your goal?
So I really appreciate the answer that that gentleman gave, as well as we have to look at, what does that mean? And so, we know for some of our parents that they really cannot come to Tillman on those two scheduled nights between that time. And so, we're really working with what that can look like. We have some teachers who have met families in other places or who have done a phone conference. So that's one way, is to really look at, how can we get everybody there, but knowing how important it is to have that relationship built. Also, it's really building those relationships, whether it's making phone calls. I work really hard, anytime we have a new family, to meet that family and to sit down and talk with them and get to know their children, making sure that our teachers know how to contact families, and if they're having trouble, we had this today, getting ahold of someone, really having a plan of how we're going to do that, whether it's emailing or letters. So it's really that team support, but it's making sure that our parents know that we care, we want them at school. And then, our PTO is helping us to make that more equitable as well, of how can we have activities where not everyone has to come and spend a lot of money or do a lot of fundraising. And, and that has definitely drawn in many more parents than we have in the past.
What's your enrollment now?
We are, we just got two new students last week, so I think we are at, Kate can help me, we have five twenty, I was gonna say 26, so 527 today.
And I, I know, having taken the tour recently, that space is tight and is probably not used most efficiently. What do you see as, as your priority areas for improved utilization of space and for new space?
Well, we are completely full at Tillman. Right now, we have no extra classrooms or extra spaces. And those of you who have been in Tillman know that our library is very small. We can't do a lot of activities. Even our read-in today, we had to really spread out into classrooms. So it's looking at how we utilize spaces like that. Another priority is our gym and cafeteria. Our gym can only be used as a full gym, not even half of the day, when it comes time to set up the areas. And so, we really look at that space as well.
Lunch in about half the, half of the gym is where, where lunches are, is that right?
Right. And with serving lunches, also the setup and the cleanup. So it really is a large portion of the day. So those would be our main areas, but we really are looking just at space as we, you know, if we would grow, that would be a challenge for us with space. Thank you.
Dr. Greenstein, could you just talk about some of the kinds of strategies and interventions you use in our effort to close the achievement gap?
So the first thing that we do is really looking at where our students come in. So when we had a lot of the new students that we talked about last year, some of them came in and they were reading over two grade levels below where they were. So it's really pinpointing, using data, and pinpointing what it is that they need and how they will best be supported. So we've really looked at our intervention structures and trying to do push-in into the classroom when it's possible. We've also done a lot with our instructional coach. She's done vocabularies. What was one of the strategies that we're using to really help teachers know how to use vocabulary strategies in helping children. Again, I keep going back to the data, because it gives us information of knowing how to respond as a staff and also how to support the individual pieces of information that's needed by our students. And then, we're really looking at our discipline structures, really thinking about how to give proactive and preventative strategies for students so that they are in the classroom and getting the information that they need and the teaching and learning that they need. So we've really revised our universals. We've really looked at helping our students really understand what they need to do in regard to behaviors and what that looks like. So that's been a big piece of it too. So it really is that combination of the academic support and the social-emotional support, along with that sense of belonging and feeling motivated and excited about being at Tillman.
I really do think that the student connection piece is, is a huge deal. I know my Tillman student probably talks more about the families and the, you know, the trailblazing time and the character counsel probably more than anything else. And if we look at schools that have had success in closing the, that gap, it's been a lot because of the personal connections that we, that you all have with each other, students and faculty. So I'm, kudos to that, and, you know, I hope you continue doing great things, because I really do think that that's a, a big piece of it, a big key, are the connections.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to thank you for organizing this morning. I thought it went really well, and your staffers did a great job. The kids are great. So thanks for putting that all together, and thanks for your leadership.
Thank you. And I have to give credit to our staff, because they have done all of the work on our Black History Month with, I've been a part of that as well, but it really was their idea, and they started last year, and it's grown a lot this year. And so, thank you. Who else? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Greenstein. Next up is the Kaiser Elementary School Improvement Report. Dr. Brian Peter.
Thank you very much. A lot of this, I could just say ditto. Nice job, Dr. Greenstein. I appreciate the opportunity to talk with you tonight. And I think at this point, a lot of you kind of know what we do at Kaiser. And so, I'm going to skip quickly through some of this, because I, I think that, again, you've got a long night ahead of you, and you've heard a lot of this, but feel free to ask questions or stop me if at any point. I will tell you that I gave you a couple of handouts that are not in here. One of them is our enrollment information, which I know particularly given considerations as we move forward toward, toward November, that that's important information for you. And then, there's the other one, the longer piece I will be referencing as we move through. As I've mentioned, the last several years, Kaiser works very much from a vision-driven and values and beliefs-driven planning process. We have a long-term planning process that we utilize. And actually, we caused, we called it Kaiser 2015. We started it in 2011 with the idea of, what do we want to be in 2015? It is not a deficit-driven model at all. We definitely are always looking at our data to determine what are some immediate needs and immediate goals that we have that might need to be addressed. But our belief is that if we, if we set the goal high and say, this is our shared belief system as a school community with our staff and our families, and this is what we want to be, and this is what we think we can be down the road, then we will be more empowered and more driven to, to make that happen, as opposed to just always putting Band-Aids on things, which can sometimes happen with the deficit-driven model. And obviously, it all is tied in with the district's strategic plan as well. So our vision involves a lot of things. Mostly, it is, it is about relationships. It's about high-quality instruction. It's, it's about critical, creative, creative thinking skills and collaboration for our kids. It's also the connection with the environment, which through Project ID, you know, was very important to us. And then finally, that, that piece of valuing our diversity and learning from each other and, and valuing the diversity of thought and experiences as well. We have three goals. They are here. They are probably, the first two are probably very similar to what most of the schools in Kirkwood have. One thing that we are pretty proud of is, a number of years ago, actually, four years ago, we, we decided that critical and creative thinking was a very important part of what we do at Kaiser, and, and really, I think it should be in all schools. I've, you've probably heard me say before, but I really believe that schools have historically, not in Kirkwood, this is historically across the board, done a very nice job of taking very creative five-year-olds, and when they leave us as 18, 19-year-olds, not only are they often less creative, but they're less comfortable with their creative spirit. And that's just not okay. It feels bad, but it also is not what we know that our, that our graduates need as they go out into the workforce. And so, if, as we listen to the business community and listen to, and find out what the most innovative companies are doing out there, we know that they need to be able to think differently about things, and they need to be able to problem-solve and work together. So that's an important part of our work. As we start getting into the data, you can see, obviously, and you've already looked at this, and you have more breakdowns, obviously, in our school improvement plan. But we continue, in all honesty, we've, we flatlined a little bit. The last three years or so, we, we had some significant jumps, but the last three years or so, we've been pretty much at the same level. It's good, but it is something that we have to be considering and keep, keep working toward, because not, not moving up past the 80% or so mark, you know, that means we're still have 20% of our students that were not meeting their needs, and we have to continue to work better at that. Our breakdowns are there. We have, and as I'll show on the next slide, we have closed the achievement gap, but it doesn't mean that we're where we need to be at all. We still have a lot of issues that we have to address. But if you look at where we were in 2007 and eight, which was horrible, we have made gains, that's for sure. We have to make sure that we continue that urgency to make those gains extend even, even more into the future. I will point out that we had no students in third, fourth, or fifth grade score at the below basic level in math or ELA last year, which is very exciting for us. We've only had one student in the last five years score at the below basic level in math at any level, at, at any grade level, and only four students in ELA. I think that, that says- I think that says a great deal about the supports that we have in place at the classroom level, but also with our interventionist, our math and literacy specialist. And coincidentally, I believe the district funded the math specialist roughly in 2010, something like that. So, we have, not only do we have someone in place now that is district-supported, but we have the right person in place and we're making some significant gains with that. And I'll touch on some of that in just a little bit as well. So, you can see our graphs here. It's positive. It's positive movement. We know that the gains need to continue. And you can specifically see, if you can look at the difference between the red and the blue in 2008 versus now, we definitely have closed that gap, but that still, the gap is still there and we have more work we have to do. One thing that, this is ELA, one thing that I'm most concerned about as a school, honestly, is if you look at our, the gap has actually increased the last two years in math between the red and the blue. And some of that, honestly, is numbers. You are well aware that Kaiser's population has changed quite a bit. We have grown quite a bit, as you can see on the graphs, but it is also turned over a little bit. And we have to continue to understand what our diversity means to us at Kaiser and how we can provide more diverse opportunities for our students as our population is becoming slightly less diverse. But we also have to make sure that we're meeting the needs of those students as they come through our school. We do have a lot of intentional efforts in place. You could say this is efforts to meet the achievement, to close the achievement gap, but I chose to say that meet the needs of all Kaiser kids because I think that we have a number of students in our school that we have to be addressing and meeting their needs. What, I'm just going to highlight really important, really shortly, the top two bullets and the fourth one really are about having structures in place. We, for a number of years at Kaiser, actually for three or four years, I'm going to say five to eight years ago, we had lots of conversations in our school. And they were very important conversations about race and courageous conversations. And we read books and we worked with people and we had presenters come in and it was all very powerful. But unfortunately, we had great conversations and we had great relationships, but to be honest with you, we didn't have the structures in place to make it work. And so, even after we had a lot of those things that we were doing in place, we still were facing the worst scores that we had ever had in our school, I think, for African-American students. And so, that presented some urgency as, you know, obviously, we missed AYP two years in a row, the last year being in 2008, and we knew we had to do something differently. A lot of what we did was put these structures in place so that we really embraced our assist process and the RTI process so that we knew that we had structures in place, that if any student was even close to failing, if we had the hint of them not meeting expectations, we had systems in place and structures so that we could swoop in as a team and work with them together. Part of that is working with the child and part of that is working with the family. And we learned a lot through that and obviously, Club Leo was an extension of that as well. But we really had to look and say, as a system, what are we going to do when this happens? Because it just wasn't working for us. And I would like to think that the conversations that we had had before that made everything work better. And if we hadn't had the conversations and the structures, then we still would have been struggling. But with only the conversations and only the relationships, which we know are very important, we still were not making the gains we had to have until we hit those, we had those structures and systems in place. We do very much believe in the whole-child development. Obviously, we want good test scores and we've worked really hard on that. But I have been most proud in my sixteen years at Kaiser of the way our staff and our families have embraced whole-child development. That includes focus on the arts, includes physical well-being, it includes creativity, honestly, and critical thinking, and those are important things for us. We've been focusing more and more on career-ready skills like STEAM. And I really think that we want our students to be good students, but we also want them to be very, very good people. And I think that's a big part of our efforts to close the achievement gap as well, is making sure that all of our, that everybody feels included and everybody is developing character as well. Part of that is through our Kaiser Cares program. Dr. Greenstein mentioned Olvea's and Olvea's is a good program. Kaiser had to Kaiserize it a little bit because we had a number of things going on with PBIS and particularly PBIS and Olvea's that were, we had to make sure this fit our philosophy. And Olvea's is very anti-bolay-driven. They disagree with me on that, but that's my opinion. And we wanted to focus on what we want from our kids and not what we don't want from our kids. And Kaiser Cares is where this came out. You can see the emphasis there is on character, being allies, being resilient, having empathy, and showing support for each other. This is the pledge, which we try very hard to not just be something that we say every morning. It needs to be something that we live. You've heard a lot about Kaiser's Project IDEA, which it still is, if you have not visited, particularly in the warmer months, it's a little less, although the kids were out there today having a good time. But it is definitely a space that not only is a great play space and is encouraging our use of play, but I think that it's also an inspiration to us all. This is, this year with staff, we have focused, we've chosen to focus a lot on instructional design. That is one of the, in our teacher evaluation program and process, that is one of the indicators that we, as a staff, decided everybody's going to be focusing on instructional design. We have spent a lot of time, and that's what the longer thing is here, focusing our, what does rigor-relevance relationships mean in our classrooms? This is very, this is entirely from our staff. And this was multiple, multiple meetings, fine-tuning things, and it started with a blank page, lots and lots of big pages, actually. And we kept narrowing things down to decide, what is it really that we're looking for? This is a draft. It would probably always be a draft long after I'm gone. And, but it is a living document that we, Alyssa and I refer to when we meet with teachers after teacher, for their post-conferences. We, actually, when we're talking, when we're going into conferences, we take this, into observations, we take this with us. And we are constantly referring to this because we think that this not only should drive our instruction and how we design lessons in the classrooms, but it also should drive our professional development in the building because if we notice that these things are not happening, we need to support teachers in figuring out why they're not. We also have put intentional efforts in our building to create a culture of innovation, quite honestly. We feel like some of the gains that we have made over the last five to ten years have not just been because we've found good practices, but because we're always trying to improve and find what we need to do differently and what we need to do better. And one of the things we've been reading is Creativity, Inc. If you haven't read it, it's an awesome book. Don't get me started. It is so, it is so much fun to read and our staff may be a little bit less excited about it than I am, but we are reading that as a staff and having wonderful conversations around that. Ed Catmull is the CEO of Pixar and it really is not about creativity, nor is it about Pixar. It really is about productive organizational cultures. And it's really an exciting book. And so, we're able to connect it with what we're doing here at Kaiser. And obviously, the work with iPads are an important piece. Put this slide in here mostly for you because I know that you probably want an update about where are we and what are we doing. I couldn't be prouder. We are ahead of where I thought we would be as a school with our iPads. Even our teachers, who I thought would probably be reluctant or the late adopters, if you will, are doing fantastic things in their classrooms with their kids. They are working together. They are learning from each other and they, the teacher leadership is running it. I would like to think that, I think our desire to let people try things and recognize that it's going to be messy when we do things is an important part of it. But I think, I just can't tell you how excited I am. And the teachers who are now saying, just like they did a number of years ago with, I don't know how I would teach without an active board now, they are saying that with the iPads. And it is really cool. And we have some teachers who are stumbling into blended learning without even realizing that that's what they're doing. And it is changing how they teach and it is freeing them up to do things with kids that, that I think that they don't necessarily, because they're so close to it, I don't think that they necessarily realize the power of what they're doing. But as someone who can walk around and see it happening in different classrooms, I definitely see it. And sometimes, it just requires us pointing out the smart things that they're doing. This you know, but I'm going to repeat it anyway. Gold Star School, National Blue Ribbon School, and we were just selected to present at the 2015 Model Schools Conference, where we also presented last year. But there's that ongoing urgency. Being good means nothing if you don't stay good. And we have to continue getting better. We have to look at not just the things that we're doing well, but also the things, and maybe even more importantly, the things that we're not doing well, because that's how we improve. And there are definitely some things that we have to improve upon. I also mentioned some things there that the teachers have specifically said if, you know, because I often ask them, if you could have high-quality professional development, just not okay professional, but high-quality professional development, what, I would want it in blank. And these are some of the things that they've told me most recently. We just have to continue being good. I feel like I've spent, we've spent the last sixteen years trying to develop this ownership in our school community where everybody feels that shared responsibility in the success of every single child. When I say everybody, I don't mean just the teachers. I mean the families, I mean the students. Everybody feels, needs to feel that. And I think they feel that now. Obviously, I'm going to be watching Kaiser from a different seat next year. But I have full confidence that the shared leadership that's in place right now, regardless of who is hired as the principal, is going to continue to do great, great things because they believe in this, they believe in kids, they believe in each other, and they want to be great. Thank you. I'm going to stop there and I'm going to bring Alyssa up here so she can, if you don't know Alyssa Taylor, this is her administrative intern. She's been a fantastic hire for us and she can help answer questions.
First of all, I want to thank you for the service and the special things that you do at Kaiser. I know this is your last improvement report as a principal at Kaiser. Thank you. My question's all the same line. CJ's interested in space. Look where you are right now. As all the principals are interested in space. I'm sure you're not okay with decisions. Do you need to get a map where you are right now? What are you thinking?
Sure. Do you want to start?
Twenty-seven percent, actually, yes.
In the last four years. Go ahead.
Well, building-wise, we're pretty full. Just to put it bluntly, we have people, I mean, just this year, we transformed a storage facility into two classrooms and it's amazing. But we definitely have a need for space. Our enrollment is going to go up. I know it will. And not only do we have a need for space, but we have a need for different space. We have classrooms that work, but we're making them work. They're not ideal. I think that we want flexible classrooms and so, things that lend themselves to collaborative work is really what our teachers want. So, the classroom that we just had built, it wasn't ideal, but it's amazing the way teachers are using it. They have a flexible wall. Non-traditional classrooms is what we, I think, would like to move forward to. What else?
You know, we have some spaces that were, you know, we have an OT and PT lab in the space that was intended to be a shared learning space in the library. You know, when you design something like a state-of-the-art library that's supposed to be this amazing thing for the next fifty years and three years in, you're having to use it for things you didn't want to use it for and you have people knocking at your door going, you know what, we could really use another special education space and look at the video lab. That'd be great for it. You know, those sorts of things are happening right now. And it's hard to say no because you know it's a need, but you also want to protect kind of the integrity of the spaces that we just put in our building.
And we're trying to keep something sacred because we know it's important to our building, to our teachers, but we are running out of room.
And the question I keep getting is, well, you know, I know the Kaiser attendance area. I didn't see a new subdivision go up over there. Where are the kids coming from?
Well, there's a reason I put the construction in there and the full-day kindergarten note. I think that a lot of it has, our capture rate is higher because we are, we're embracing, you know, those families are wanting to come to us because we have free full-day kindergarten, which is fantastic. I think that our houses are turning over, to be honest with you. My first, certainly my first five or six years and probably closer to ten years, at Kaiser, there was, there was no middle ground. In where we are, in the middle of town, basically, there were smaller houses that were either often older community members or young families. And then, there were very big houses that were considerably more expensive. And a lot of our families were in those smaller houses and then they were wanting to move in our attendance area, but there was nothing there. And they just couldn't afford some of the other houses in our attendance area and so they would often leave and go other places. We have found that that has changed. Some of the families are staying, they're adding on to their houses. Some of them are tearing them down and building new houses. And I don't know, to be honest with you, how we're getting, I mean, it blows me away every, and it's summer. When we closed school last year, we had forty-one kindergarteners enrolled for this school year. First week of August, we had ninety-five.
Right now, we have forty.
It's a challenge, yes. And, you know, heaven forbid you, one of those kindergarten teachers that just wants a contract.
And, you know, if this keeps up and it sounds like it's going to keep up, you're, I believe the master facility plan indicated you probably could use, how many, two, two classrooms?
I believe what I saw in the paper was two classrooms, if it's the primo package. To be honest with you, we could use more than that. But the two classrooms, I think, would fill, it would fill the classroom needs that we still anticipate because we are at five hundred and forty or so right now. And I believe I saw, one of the projections saw that eighteen, nineteen, we might be five ninety, something like that. And so, I mean, if we were to add two classrooms, we're full right now and we gain fifty more kids, that really means we're going to be full in however many years. And so, it'd be nice, but I honestly, my gut tells me we probably need more, like four-ish.
And I've seen the master facility plan, some of the renderings, or at least how they would place within your footprint those additional classrooms. I guess it's really incumbent upon all of us to conduct the thought experiment, okay, what happens if we're unable to get the funding to construct two or four classrooms? I guess that means we have to put trailers somewhere at Kaiser. Where would we put them?
Well, we explored that for about a day and a half last summer. They'd be on the playground. They would be in the less-than-ideal situation. To be honest with you, we would have to explore and this would not be, this would not be ideal, but we do have a couple of larger spaces that potentially we could, I mean, we know, from when we were under construction and we had less classroom spaces, we had to put multiple classes in a large space. And we would have to decide, is that preferable to trailers in a weird space, particularly in a situation where we know that security is of utmost importance and having students in trailers, when I was in school, means something different than it does now.
Oh, well, thank you for your report. I appreciate it. I have so many questions and I'm going to limit it to two or three. But no, I really respect your passion and your commitment to urgency, even though you've had recent successes and everything. And I feel it when you talk about it. So, I really thank you for that because, you know, I think one of my experiences with being on the board that I've learned so much is that I just feel like there's just this extreme sense of urgency that we have to help all of our children succeed. So, thank you for that. And I guess I'm curious about your visioning process. And you said you did it with staff and parents. So, that's one question I'd kind of like to know about what the process was. And then, also, just one other comment, this is a sidebar, but your data analysis and the way you use your data to make changes at your school, could you talk a little bit about that as well? I know that's a big subject and...
I'll let Alyssa take that. Our visioning process, that's a joke because she wasn't there when we did it. It is, it's actually a process that is very similar to one that I was fortunate enough when I was in graduate school at the University of Missouri with Jerry Valentine. We had a process with the Middle Level Leadership Center and the Missouri Center for School Improvement that we used with, well, in my time when I was there, about twenty-five schools around the state. And it really involves developing shared belief systems and basically coming together and finding out where is it that we have common ground? What are the core principles that we really believe in and what is that? And if we say, if we say that, well, I don't have, I don't have a slide of our values and beliefs, but if we say that whatever our values and beliefs are, what, based on that, if we were to look five years into the future, what does it look like? And it's, and often, and I totally get, a lot of schools have mission statements. I believe more in vision statements because mission statements are too here and now for me and I'm a forward thinker, at least I try to be, which could be good and bad. But I like to, I like to know what I'm reaching for. But I like to, I like to know what I'm reaching for. And, and the vision process is something that we've used, and this is our third cycle, I think, at Kaiser, where we've, we've gone through and said, what are we reaching for? And what are we, what are we driving for? And it's, and if it's not something that everybody in the school, at least at the time we adopted, embraces, then there's not that shared ownership and that, that, there's not that urgency for teachers to go, well, I was a part of this. I want to, I want to help make it happen. And so, so this is that process. And then we, we use a system, a systemic planning process, pardon me, as opposed to strategic planning process. And it, and I can have lots of conversations with you, again, I can get too excited about that. But I really believe in systems thinking and I really believe in analyzing things as a system and planning as a system. And, and that's, that's how we came up with our plan. They were, yes. We had multiple meetings. There was, there was a, for at least the first part of it, with the values and beliefs part of it, they, we were marrying everything we were doing with the staff, we were also doing with families. We had some Saturday meetings. Actually, we had one very long Saturday meeting. But it's, ideally, you do everybody together, but you know, the bigger the group gets and odd schedules and that sort of thing. And we had a number of parents involved in them. We also had feedback opportunities with, with surveys. And to be honest with you, if I was going to be there, because we're, you know, we're to the, we need to do it again, I would also be including students in the next round again. Did you want the data stuff or do you want to talk later about that? Part of it is the projection process that we used with, with what was Edison now is evaluating. I just, yeah. You think I get excited about this? Let me talk about data.
No question, I just wanted to say thank you and tell you how proud we are. You have helped raise Kaiser to this blue ribbon and gold star and model school standard and we are very lucky to have you here. We're excited and I've setting, this slide you had about expectations, expectations are really high at Kaiser for next year. And I know I've heard from parents already who want to make sure we continue that standard. So you have very, you've left very big shoes to be filled when you leave. So thank you very much for all your hard work and dedication.
I keep hearing that, but I will tell you that the best for Kaiser is yet to come.
Thank you, Dr. Banner.
Thank you.
Next up, our financial reports and budget amendments. Mr. Mike Rome.
Our operating revenues for January were nineteen million, six hundred and seven thousand dollars. It consists mainly of current taxes, which were seventeen point one million. Prop C revenue, four hundred and eight thousand. Merchants and manufacturers, Surtax, nine hundred eighty-three thousand. Transfer payments, three hundred and six thousand. State revenue, four hundred and forty-three thousand. And federal revenue, two hundred and seven thousand. Our collection rate for current taxes was eighty-seven point one five percent through January compared to eighty-five point nine nine percent last year. Last year was, was low. We ended up collecting or catching up by the end of the year. Eighty-seven percent through January is more typical. Our operating expenditures for December were five million, three hundred seventy-two thousand. We did not have any larger or unusual expenditures for the month. Proposition I fund, we paid one million, six hundred and fifteen thousand in principal and four hundred and thirty-five thousand in interest on the Series 2013 and 14 Leashold Revenue Bonds. In our construction fund, we paid four hundred and fifty-four thousand in construction costs and services for the Walker and Auditorium. Regarding amendments for January, we had no revenue amendments in January. Our expenditure amendments for January totaled to zero. We had several transfers that were made, but they did not increase the budget. It's recommended that the budget amendments for January be approved.
This is an action item.
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions regarding the financial reports and budget amendments for Mr. Rome?
Just one, real quick one. The principal and interest payments, are they due in February and August? Is it twice a year?
It's twice a year, yeah, August and February. Yep.
Thank you.
Seeing we have no further comments, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the financial reports and budget amendments as outlined by Mr. Rome, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Next up is new business. For the approval of utility relocation agreement between the City of Kirkwood, Ameren U.E. and the District. Mr. Rome.
The utility lines in front of Tillman and along Quan Avenue, they've been a safety concern for the District and the City of Kirkwood for several years. Ameren has agreed to pay one-third of the cost to move the utility poles if the District and the City of Kirkwood each share and pay one-third of the cost. The total project to move the utility lines is, is about two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. Each party would have to pay just over seventy-six thousand dollars. In addition to moving the utility poles, the parking lot, which is in poor condition now, will have to be replaced and resurfaced. And part of the, the agreement that we're discussing with the City of Kirkwood is, in addition to repairing and replacing the parking lot, is adding a median along Quan Avenue that separates Quan Avenue and the parking lot area. And then also restriping the parking lot to have angled parking, which will help with traffic flow and, and safety. Overall, with the cost of moving the utility poles and resurfacing and renovating the parking lot area, the total cost to the District would be approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is what was budgeted out of the maintenance fund. I'm recommending that the, the board approve the utility pole relocation agreement. And one last thing, we, we will, if this is approved tonight, then the District and the City of Kirkwood will meet to discuss how the layout of the parking lot should, should be, and then we'll bring that back to the board for approval.
This is an action item.
Move approval.
Have a motion and a second. Questions from Mr. Rome.
Yeah, I just have a quick question. I know that we've been through a lot of this already, but just to clarify exactly what the, what the motion says today is the relocation of the poles and then resurfacing of the parking lot. But I mean, there's a lot of parking lot at Tillman. So specifically, you're talking about the Circle Drive in front of Tillman, correct?
It's the, the front parking lot area where, where the cars are parking and then also that, that turning lane where the, I believe the buses pull in and out of, right in front of the school.
Right. So when you say parking lot, not the back parking lot, not the side parking lot, the, the front Circle Drive and the parking right in front will be resurfaced and then the utility poles moved.
Yes, that's correct.
And that's the, that's the specifics of the motion we're voting on right now. And, but we have all talked and agreed that angle parking and a median and that kind of thing, but...
The motion is just on the agreement to remove and relocate the utility poles. We have discussed with the city the other improvements that we plan to do and we budgeted in our maintenance budget for, for this summer. And that includes the angle parking on Quan, the curbing, and then refinishing the Circle Drive. That will come and we will need to move on that. That's already been approved through the maintenance budget, when we approved the budget for that. But because of timing and trying to get that all done before school starts, we're going to have to move that along very quickly. I just want to respond to Mr. Beanstein's question. We have not discussed any other improvements the city is going to make on either end of Quan or on Quan. We are only talking about the utility replacement relocation. I'm not sure, we have not had, like I said, we've not had any other discussions about any other kind of improvements the city's going to make on street, on lighting or streetlights at either end of Quan. With the only other item we talked about was that we wanted to have no parking on the north side of Quan in front of Tillman and also down that next block during the designated drop-off and pickup times.
Yeah, I would think at the very least, and I think Dr. Greenstein would agree as well, no parking between our property line and wood or wood lawn would be phenomenal and I can't imagine that that's going to cost that much to put a few parking, no parking signs down there. I think, I think if, I think if you put the no parking signs, you, you move the utility poles, Dr. Greenstein's worked really hard on figuring out a much better carpool pickup line, and then you have the angled parking and the median and that kind of thing, I think we are going to be, you know, we're going to be golden. We're going to think that's like the best situation we've ever seen. So I think just do everything we've talked about, plus a few, no parking signs. I, I can't imagine that anybody would be, you know, not thrilled with that situation.
Any further questions for Mr. Rome or Dr. Williams? Just so we're clear, the relocation agreement was attached to tonight's agenda. And as Dr. Williams mentioned, the relocation agreement specifically provides only that the city, Ameren U.E. and the District will each equally share one-third in the cost, which is estimated to be seventy-six thousand, one hundred sixty-seven dollars and twenty-eight cents per party to the agreement. And that's what we're being asked to approve tonight. And that further, any future contracts to be let to do the parking and median and the like will be returned to the board for review and approval at that time.
I appreciate you clarifying that so much better than I did, EJ. Thank you.
That said, we have a motion and a second to approve the relocation agreement between the City of Kirkwood, Ameren U.E. and the Kirkwood School District. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you.
Mr. President, I just want to thank the City of Kirkwood and Ameren because we have worked on this for many years and Ameren finally offered to participate in the, in this project. And the city was really facilitated it all happening. So I know we have a couple of city council members here. I want to express my thanks to them.
Ed, we echo that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, administrative board reports. First up, eight point oh-one, the staff development activities report. Dr. Chris Raker.
Good evening. I shared with you the, the typical report that I present after we experience a few professional development days. And I know this is a lot of text and I certainly wouldn't expect anyone to read all of it. But I do come before you just to say thank you because the staff of the Kirkwood School District genuinely appreciates the fact that you recognize the importance of professional development. And because of that, you allow us this year to have seven half-days of professional development and a full day. There's so much research behind the importance of professional development for really improving achievement. And so, we wanted to share with you some highlights of some things that have taken place this year. So I will begin with the most recent and then I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Nick Strecker, to talk about an important day that happened in January. I don't have any specific data yet because this event took place on Friday. But we had really an incredible day of learning together on Friday around the topic of African-American achievement and race in the Kirkwood School District. And sometimes I think that the informal feedback tells us at least as much as formal feedback. A survey is going to go out tomorrow morning to all staff and I'm sure we'll get a lot of information, which we'll continue to share with you. But I wanted to share just a few of the pieces that have come to me. This one was particularly important because one of my colleagues saw it in a Facebook post that wasn't even addressed to us. And this is from one of our support staff. She actually is one of the secretaries in the district. And she posted on Facebook, "Today was Professional Development Day for the whole district. We focused the entire day on the African-American achievement gap. I am emotionally spent, but it was very valuable to me. As much as you think it doesn't apply to you or however uncomfortable you are with the topic, it is real. It is so necessary to pay attention. I appreciate the encouragement to be brave in having conversations and in being an ally. I'm not a teacher, but this applies to everyone. I look forward to seeing the changes that come from this Kirkwood brave encouragement." This one comes from a, a white male teacher at the high school who said, "Friday was an excellent learning experience concerning equity. As I think about what I heard, I wanted to share some thoughts with you. Here's what I heard. Because of the country I live in and the race and gender I was born to, I have an advantage in society. I need to accept this and use it for good. I always thought that African, if African-Americans valued education more, they would be more committed to learning and academic success. What I heard was that African-Americans recognize that education will not prevent racism or affect their reduced level of privilege. Doing their best in school is not the answer to their life condition. Even with education, they will still be pulled over by more police officers and be disadvantaged in society. African-American parental involvement should not be measured just by the parent-teacher conference attendance. These parents are often involved in other ways. To increase the academic success of African-American males, I need to build positive relationships with them, since the student-teacher relationship is important to motivation. To increase academic success of African-Americans, I need to treat them the same as I treat non-African-Americans with the same level of rigor and expectation. I need to discover my personal biases and work to remove them by learning more and broaden my lens so I can teach from all perspectives." This is a shorter one, but it is from one of our African-American teachers at the elementary level who is typically not a very vocal person. She doesn't always speak up loudly, but she said, "Thank you for allowing today's courageous conversation to take place. I honestly didn't know what to expect, but I left with a sense of hope. I'm looking forward to the brave actions that will take place to address the issues of our achievement gap." And finally, from a middle school administrator, "What a great day. I was moved and stretched and inspired." Thank you. And we thank you for giving us the ability to spend those days together learning. Friday's day was, was powerful for all of us in different ways, but we're very hopeful that we're going to help our staff and our administrators who are working so hard to close that achievement gap by continuing with the conversations that we started on Friday. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Strecker, who is going to talk about a technology development day in January.
Chris, I just would like to make one comment, if it's okay. I just wanted to thank you for Friday because I was there and it was very moving. And anyway, the comment that people made about it being emotionally exhausting was just, it was truly emotionally exhausting. So, and I just wanted to thank you for that and also thank you for the urgency I think that you've placed in a number of people's hearts for this matter. Thank you.
Thanks, Maria, and thanks for joining us.
And the night team as well, too, Maria and Jenny.
Thank you.
I have the pleasure of revisiting a day back in January on staff development. As Dr. Raker outlined, with a powerful day last Friday, we had another unique learning opportunity, a little bit different than last Friday, but still something new to our district that we hadn't experienced in the same way before. On paper, this day was specified to be around technology. That's how it started, be a district day and technology to be the focus. TLG, the Technology Leadership Group, began digging in on that idea back in October and we'll share with you where the group took us. So in supporting our student learning and our one-to-one program, we sent out to staff highlighting what the day would be about. And we are on the cusp of finally being truly one-to-one. Our kindergarten classes will be set by spring break. Probably we'll have them in every building. So we're finally at a point where every student will have their own individual iPad. And so, January sixteenth was all about a day to meet those needs, dedicate that time to supporting and developing our staff wherever they were on that journey, whether it was in the fifth semester, working with students or getting ready for their first. You have these materials, so I'll move through some of these slides quickly. But again, Technology Leadership Group is twenty-five teachers, joined by ten technology specialists. When we're all, we're all together for our monthly meetings, like we were this evening, earlier over at Robinson, we're thirty-six people in the room. So these folks planned accordingly for that day and spent some time thinking about how we could frame that day differently. So what we decided to do was to investigate a way that we could take a district idea and have that focus, but individualize it per building. So we began to design specific ways... So we began to design specific ways that met each building's needs, but talked about specific focuses that we would all tend to. We were fortunate to have Scott Meach come into that conversation about halfway. Scott Meach is a current Apple Education Leader for our region. He's a former classroom teacher. He delivered a keynote live at the high school and per video at all the other buildings. I won't go through all his credentials here, but let's just say that Scott quickly established himself as a classroom teacher first and an Apple employee second, and brought lots of really specific learning experiences from his past, which really helped extend that learning to the group. We focused around, with Scott setting the tone in the keynote, around the idea of the student perspective. So one piece that we wanted all of our teachers to be thinking differently about was looking at, as Scott would have phrased in his keynote, "Not so much making decisions about what helps you teach, but making decisions about what helps students learn." And that might sound simple, but it's an easy trap to fall into as a teacher, to think about that instructional design and starting with students' learning first and not your instructional needs first. He spoke to T-PAC and SAMR, which are pieces that we've used throughout, or we're going to throw up a couple of slides in a second, that you've seen before, specifically around technology's effect on student learning. I just pulled one slide from Scott's presentation that we got lots of really positive feedback. I think if folks could point to one or two things that day that really stuck with them, this would be one of them. And this goes back to that student perspective and thinking about where we're meeting our students' needs. So this just quickly shows the age of our students. If we think about them as elementary students, middle and high school students, what was the technology they grew up in and with? So our high school students, for instance, were born after Google had come around. They've grown up with the idea of MP3s and music that you can get wherever you want their whole life. And as you can see, Facebook came into existence when they were in kindergarten. So the idea of social media, that's their comfort zone. That's what they know. That's where their comfort levels are. And so one of our challenges, as we think about that and the technology they've worked with, is the iPhone popped up when they were still in elementary school, and the iPad has only been around for four years. So they were in middle school when the iPad came into existence. So the technology they've worked with all these years, as students here in our district and others, would be laptops. So it helps frame out some of those perspectives. As a high school student, the technology that I assume I'm most comfortable with working with is going to be most often that laptop and computer technology. But when we look down at the middle school and how those timeframes pop out, we start to realize that we have a different type of learner who's on their way. And to think that our elementary school students never knew a time when you could touch a screen and something wouldn't happen explains why we see all those videos with kids tapping magazines, and they're surprised when nothing happens on those pictures. So we tried to express those ideas, and Scott did a great job in his keynote, through these ideas of T-PAC, which is, we could talk about for an hour, and I know Dr. Greenstein and Dr. Painter could join me in that, a lot of what they talked about in their school improvement reports. I think, hopefully, you'll see those reflected in the work that TLG did. Just that idea, we're looking for the sweet spot when the pedagogy, the way I teach, the content knowledge I possess, and what the technology enables me to do allows me to hit that zone where we're really tending to everything at once at the highest level. So those foundational themes that went out to each building was to concentrate and extend more learning around SAMR, the opportunity for teachers to assess their learning along the SAMR model, so whether I'm substituting, augmenting, modifying, or redefining student learning, where is my instructional design hitting? That idea of honoring the student perspective, and then the Kirkwood workflow. So in our district, this is a slide you've seen before, but we talk specifically about how learning goals relate to the SAMR model. It's a way to invite teachers from a different perspective. If I'm designing my lessons, I'm thinking instructionally about the lessons and about the learning goals, pardon me, that I'm setting for the students, I can then reflect on how the technology will help me do that. So these are a couple of slides from our resources that we use in professional development with our teachers. This is a visual of our workflow. So this one even got a little bit of revision in today's TLG meeting, but we're constantly tending to this idea, which seems simple, but we really need to think through, that we provide content for students on their iPads, they work with it in a myriad of ways, and they need to get that information back to the teacher for assessment, and then in return, it comes back to them for feedback. So we try to be explicit about the best ways to do that, to try to find common workflows, ideas that we can support all of our teachers with. So we had those opening dialogues, the keynote from Scott. I'll zip through these, you have these in your notes, but this is what went on at each building. The theme is just that idea that as you look at those pieces, each building approached this uniquely. They met the needs of their staff head-on, but in each case, we were certain of the fact that we were tending to those foundational pieces. So whatever instructional design met the needs of that group, for instance, Kaiser and Tillman here tonight, Kaiser had a whole group discussion, and then they had teacher-led sessions around specific themes, and teachers could choose which sessions they wanted to follow. Tillman broke up by, differentiated by grade levels, so they met the needs of K2, 3, 5, and Maple, which is their specials, along with discussions. And they even, in some of those groups, worked with specific units. So those are two very different approaches, but both equally viable and working with the survey data in the groups today, very successful. So our focus about the day, to summarize, was that idea of taking a district learning opportunity, but bringing some individual building design with it via the Technology Leadership Group. It's exciting to report to you that the Technology Leadership Group had this opportunity. These are full-time teachers in the classroom, and to think that we could meet over those monthly meetings and plan with their principals to bring about a design that met each building's needs is pretty special. That's a first time that we've pulled off something like that, I believe, in the district around our professional development on that scale. And then it was an opportunity for us to also kind of orient folks where we were. What do we have in place that we can build on, and what are those common resources that we have in place, and to support that shared vision of what this can be. So just to conclude, I've got just two or three slides here. These are from our overall staff survey. We broke this down for each building. So we had these specific parts as well as individual teacher responses. So in today's TLG meeting, every TLG team was looking over everyone in their staff in their building who had replied specifically pieces that they would like to learn more on, who they'd like to learn from. This is, these few questions are a little larger in their focus, so Scott's keynote just kind of highlighting that we were excited, that that met folks' needs, and even exceeded expectations for a lot of folks on the day. So about 95% of our staff who was surveyed saw that as a successful way to frame the day. And the same for working with their colleagues. So in those learning opportunities that TLG designed, again, it's good feedback that we're meeting those needs. And then this is a, this is great look ahead to where our work goes next. So just a quick snapshot on those three ideas. So the green up top being emerging, I'm still, I still need more time with this concept, and the blue being I'm in progress, I'm working with it, and then the orange, I'm putting this to practice, and I feel empowered by it. So you can see, working through those three foundational pieces, the workflow, the SAMR scale, personalized learning, that student perspective piece, we've got a lot of work to do with the staff on those. And I think it's, I think it shows a good balance between a comfort zone with the way we're approaching it, but obviously need to continue, and that's been our theme to finish off these TLG meetings for the years, sustain the learning and maintain the momentum. It was a good, it was a good day, it was a positive day, and we're looking forward to doing that. And to that effect, overall in the district, these are the folks that teachers would like to follow up with in that learning. And I think that speaks volumes about the importance of those teacher leaders that are in place as TLG colleagues, and those buildings that have the fortune of an instructional coach in place to look at that. They could tap one or more, but those are roles that are really valued in the building, and teachers turn to them for that information. I'd be pleased to give you any more details on the day, but it was a good, it was a good one. It was a half-afternoon, I don't know if I said it was a half-day, it was not a whole day, it was just the afternoon, so.
No real questions, but just wanted to say thank you. Also, we have to remember too that we're still new and early on in the technology. I mean, usually takes a few years once you get the instruments before teachers really start understanding what they're doing with them and how they're going to use them in their teaching, so thank you. I think we've come a long way since we've had them, but we've still got a long way to go, but thanks for the work.
Thank you. It's definitely second-order change, and we're in the midst of it. We've got, we've got time to go.
And also, I wanted to say thanks for the Unite group for Friday. I think, Chris, I was very, very proud of the staff and their reactions and their discussions. And I think that we're taking huge leaps to getting where we need to be. So thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Yes, and at both schools that report tonight, I had the pleasure of attending parent meetings, and I know they've had additional meetings that I wasn't even present for, and those are key. I think it was important when we started, and it's important to maintain those opportunities to communicate with parents. We've talked about having opportunities, once we have the iPads in place and we have K1 and 2 carts available, which will stay at school, about how we could have teachers, I'm sorry, we could have parents come in and work with those iPads specifically to just experience exactly what students are experiencing throughout the day, even working through a couple of lessons perhaps.
Are you teaching the parents about how they're going to experiment with that? How they're going to choose their tools?
Sure, I spoke to the first instance, but your second example is something that we should explore as well. It's not something that we've tapped into, there's definitely that possibility.
Would it be here with people that came in? Yeah, we just will, yeah. Yeah, we'll talk to them.
Sure.
If they're able to come back around and see if they're able to call them, they'll learn.
That would be powerful for our staff, absolutely.
It would be great.
That would be great. Thank you. Thanks.
Thanks, Chris. Thanks, Nick.
Thank you.
Next up, 8.02 Superintendent's Report. Dr. Williams.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. Just an update on our current administrative searches. We have completed the search and offered contracts for the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction and the Executive Director for Student Services positions. We are just starting, or in the midst of the Kaiser principal selection process. We hope to have that completed by mid-March. Kindergarten registration, we're slightly ahead of last year with 209 students registered so far. We still have 75 packets out, including 14 non-resident employee children. We expect 400-plus students this fall in over 20 sections. Our transfer VTS students, as you know, there's a February 1 deadline for intent to return. We received notification from 115 out of 126 students who were eligible to return next year from Riverview and Normandy, that they do plan to return. The total number of non-resident students from those two districts continue to decline. We also expect about 171 students from the VIC program next year. So the total number, including VIC and students from non-accredited districts, will be lower this next year than it was this year. ACT, just information, we will be offering the ACT. The state will be paying for the administration of that to all of our junior students. It is open to all resident students that are currently juniors, so that includes students that attend non-public schools. They do have to call our office and register, but they will be able to come to the high school and take the ACT test. We're in the process of getting ready through our Community Relations Office to conduct, send out a survey to all of our parents, and we'll be also doing some phone canvassing in an effort together, as much information we can about the perceptions of the district and some of the needs that we have. And just, I think EJ will probably mention this, but Ed Plus is hosting their annual Legislative Breakfast Saturday morning, and that begins at 8:00 at the Marriott West. Our legislators will be in attendance. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. As you mentioned, future events, Saturday at 8:00 AM, the Ed Plus Legislative Breakfast will be at Marriott West. On Monday, the 2nd of March at 5:00, is a regularly scheduled Board Workshop here at the Administrative Service Center. And the next regularly scheduled Board Meeting is March 9, 7:00 PM in this room. Dr. Williams, is there a need for a closed meeting?
Yes, Mr. President.
All those in favor, please indicate by roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, I do need a motion to adjourn the public meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor of adjourning the public meeting, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Meeting's closed.